And TIF assistance. As you recall, I brought this up as an item of future consideration at our last meeting. And all in attendance voted to put this on the agenda. This is a very high level discussion only because this board has not experienced projects coming to redevelopment projects in the village that occur within zoning code and do not request TIF assistance. So wanted to give the opportunity to discuss the role of affordable housing in our interests moving forward. So I will hand it over to Rebecca and then probably Bart or Bart's just gonna chime in. And basically, we're just discussing tonight in the hopes of giving staff direction. There are four options included in the memo before us. We won't be discussing anything that's not included in the packet this evening. So Rebecca, can I hand it over to you or did you want Bart to take it?
Yep. Um, in reference to the memo, we kind of lay out where we've been in terms of TIF policy. So in February of 2021, the village board approved Policy 40 for TID creation and TIF assistance. And the, the whole process outlined two phases. One, which was Phase One application and Phase Two. And then following that, on March 15th of 2021, the board approved Resolution 2021, which approved the extension of TID one for purposes of affordable housing. Then the CDA was tasked by the village board to make a recommendation and how to utilize those TID funds for TID one extension. So they have. Pardon me, just wanted to get that muted. The CDA throughout the last year has undertaken a number of educational listening sessions with presenters to learn more about the topic and, and get more comfortable as they gear to set out a process to determine how to utilize those funds. And while we're doing that, we also reflected on the fact that in 2021, we had two proposals for multifamily redevelopment. When an application for redevelopment comes in, it comes into the planning and development department. And the applicant, particularly in this case, because it's a commercial redevelopment, is required to file a planning and zoning application for any redevelopment or additions. The applicants are reviewed by the Planning and Development Director and members of the department, and then the applicant is informed of any additional approvals required by the CDA, the Design Review Board, the Plan Commission, or the Village Board. The first applicant submitted by Catalyst Partners and Three Leaf Development, now known as Three Leaf Partners, sought to develop a 42-unit multifamily building on Capital Drive and included the possibility of affordable units. Since the time of their original application, the developer has now communicated an inability to include affordable housing units within their updated proposal as they, as they decrease the number to 37 units and reduce the mass, to reduce the mass into the building and are experiencing additional holding costs and delayed, with due to delayed approvals and increased construction costs. Three Leaf Partners has noted that they'd like to include affordable housing, but that the current economics just don't work. The village asked the second applicant, which was Wimmer Communities, to consider affordable housing within their development located on Oakland Avenue. And Wimmer relayed that they were not interested in including this, even if public, public assistance was available. It's just not what they're looking to do within their business model. So it was interesting because when we reflected on Policy 40, it was created and was written under the assumption that the developers would want to request TID creation and TID assistance for development. TID funding, as we've learned through the multiple sessions with the CDA, is a primary tool for municipalities to incentivize developments that would include affordable housing. So the village has the option of utilizing Policy 40 and approaching developers to consider affordable housing and other items within their development if they so choose. Instead of the developer paying the Phase One review fee and Phase Two review fee, the CDA could potentially contribute those costs to review project feasibility if the developer expresses the interest to do so. And then should the village agree to pursue contributing ones for affordable housing, it could be accomplished through creation of a new TID or utilizing funds set aside from the extension of TID number one. So as a reminder, both projects that have come in in 2021 were proposed as by right development, which means that they meet the requirements of the zoning code with respect to the use and the structure of the, you know, the height and the setback. So as long as the development meets all of the defined criteria, including parking and design, they would be allowed to obtain construction permits without further village approvals. It's also important to note that with respect to affordable housing, inclusionary zoning is prohibited by statute. So the definition of inclusionary zoning is a zoning ordinance is defined, is defined in regulation or policy that prescribes that a certain number, a percentage of new or existing residential dwellings in the land development being made available for rent or sale to an individual or family with a family income at or below certain percentages of the median income. So unless the village would decide to partner with one of the developments, it cannot require the developer to include affordable housing units. And so we wanted to just kind of bring this up for some discussion and reflection and check in to see how the board feels about that and how you'd like us to proceed. Anne, you're on mute.
Bart, is there anything that you'd like to add at this point? Okay. Yeah, I, I definitely wanted to offer the board the chance to talk about this because of the length of time that the Three Leaf Partners Development has been coming before different bodies for the approvals that were required. There was, along the way, there were people that expressed support for the development because it had the interest of including affordable housing. Obviously, there have been people that have been opposed to the development because of the impact, concern around impact to the neighborhood and the size of the building. So obviously, it's billed by rights, so the concerns around it's zoned for that use. However, there was disappointment expressed when it became apparent that affordable units weren't going to walk, work on the private development side. So I just wanted, because we've spent so much time talking about affordable housing, I just wanted to make it clear to the board that I wanted to make sure that we all understood that we can partner and the developer is open to that. But we're not making a decision on that tonight as far as this, this project goes. It's more just that I wanted to just take a pause and make sure that the whole board understood kind of how this works or could work. So with that, I will open it up to discussion or questions from the, the trustees. And again, we are just looking for, to hopefully give staff direction either to explore options of partnering to achieve that affordable housing component or to just move on and have the, the developer continue their project by right. And for that matter, it can be directing staff to make sure, to take this opportunity to make it clear that you want staff to always inquire about affordable housing. Trustee Baldoff.
So I just want to clarify that we, if, if a developer does not want to offer affordable housing, the village could, as a policy, choose to subsidize that housing ourselves?
If the developer were interested in that. So they have the options. They can submit an application for TIF assistance on their own or we could be proactive and ask them if they're interested.
Okay, but if they say they're not interested, there's nothing we could do to help make those units more affordable?
Okay. Wesley?
Yeah, I guess I can, I can jump in. I mean, you know, when I think this through, I really don't see a downside to looking at the options here. I mean, we're not committing to providing funds. We're not, but we do have that, that bucket of money from TID number one. The village has identified this as a priority and I just don't, you know, I'm not saying that this is something that it would have to be the right deal, obviously. It would have to be structured correctly. We'd have to be comfortable with it and it would have to, you know, we obviously need a very close review, but I really, at this point, I don't see the downside in asking staff to explore whether there is something that could be done here. I mean, again, there's only a limited number of things that we can do in order to increase affordable housing throughout the village. We happen to be in the situation where we, we have some funds available to look at this. And at this point, we aren't committing to any kind of deal. We obviously wouldn't make a deal that didn't make sense for the village. But I think that we, I think that it makes sense to go out there and, and see, see what's available. That's, that's what I'm thinking.
Thank you. Trustee Arndorfer?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I'd like to see the CDA complete its work and then come back with some, you know, see what they come back with in terms of recommendations for that, including how we use, you know, funds to support affordable housing initiatives. I mean, I think there's a process by which they, the developer could pursue seeking TIF funds. And I don't necessarily want to, I, I don't want to spend our funds on, you know, waiving fees for them at this point in time. But I mean, if they want to explore that, I think they, you know, I think we can do what we want to encourage them. I just would be interested to see what the CDA comes back with before moving forward in terms of how we think about spending the money. Thank you.
Can I?
Other trustees?
Can I, can I jump in real quick?
Yeah.
Yeah, just to be clear, just to clarify my comments. I am not proposing any kind of deal or any kind of, you know, any kind of structure to a deal. What I'm saying, you know, just to be very clear in what I'm saying is that I think it makes sense to have the conversation to see if there's anything else that makes sense for the village. And certainly, certainly there are things I would support and things I, I wouldn't support. And I just think that in this exploratory phase, it just, you know, given our limited, limited resources to address this, I think it makes sense to, to just see what's out there.
So as few were thinking about the, the possible directions, directives contained within the memo, is there one that sort of aligns most, more closely with what each of you are seeing? Would it be? No?
I think Trustee Stoker Brand has her, has her.
Oh, I just was asking about Trustee Warren if you wanted to.
Oh, I, I would, I, I don't, again, I don't see the downside in having staff have the conversation when these come in.
Okay.
We only have a few shots and there's only, Sherwood doesn't have redevelopment every single year or every single couple of years. So I, I don't see the, I don't see the downside in just having a conversation. We don't know, again, I, I don't want to foreclose avenues. We don't, well, we don't know what we have. I'll stop talking now.
Okay. Trustee Stok Brand and then Trustee Baldoff.
Thank you. So I was involved on the, the group that, when the Plan Commission updated the comprehensive plan. And one of the things they recommended was waiting for the right project. And that comes to my mind in this discussion. The other thing remind, that I'm reminded of was one of our affordable housing discussions at the CDA level, I'm on the CDA, was also about, there was a gentleman, I believe, from the county who kept talking about going slow. And so as someone who's on the CDA, and I would have to tell you from my point of view, which is just one of many, we are not even close. We don't know if we want to do rent subsidies, down payment subsidies. We don't know if we want to help people pay for their store windows, you know, to improve housing we've got. We are so far away from figuring out how to spend, if we spend the TIF money on affordable housing. And to, to go in now and say, what do you want us to do? I mean, I guess the discussion, I can understand Trustee Warren saying that, you know, what's wrong with conversation? But I guess my understanding is that these conversations are having, the developers are coming to the Plan Department and people, the village staff, and saying words like, we'd love to do affordable housing with you, but, or we were interested in doing, maybe not that emphatic, but there's nothing in writing. And so until I see something in writing, it's all just rhetoric. And if you really want that, I'd like to see something in writing because I'm not sure I want to give you, I'm not sure I want to waive the $5,500 Phase One fee or the $8,000 Phase Two fee because, you know, you're not, they're not going to open their books. They're a private business. I don't know what their margins are. And I guess I'm thinking, you know, if you want us to waive the fees for Phase One, Phase Two, to see if you're really serious, because you, you often come to staff and say, you're interested in affordable housing, but we never really know. We just like have never really, it all seems to be conversation. And that's my problem with this. The timing and the fact that it's all conversation that, that won't, that doesn't really hold water at the end of the day. I just think that it would be best to stick with what we've got. Let the CDA work through this. It's complicated. It's a lot of money. I mean, I understand in housing, $2 million is not that much. But for the, the people of the village to be willing to give up some tax relief, to do affordable housing with no, I, I need more. Thank you.
Trustee Baldoff?
Um, I just was going to say, I, you know, am inclined to agree with Trustee Warren here is that I would very much like to proactively pursue, you know, what does it look like to go after affordable housing options? And, and I get Trustee Stoker's point that we haven't necessarily outlined exactly what it looks like. But I think that the people of the village were pretty clear that this is something that's important to make our village more inclusive, to make it a more welcoming place for all different families. And, you know, they didn't ask us to take this vote to, to not move forward. You know, I don't want to move too fast, but I also don't want to let, you know, the, you know, the perfect be the enemy of the good. When we, I feel like have a very clear directive that creating affordable housing is an important priority for people of this village. And we need to figure out ways to, to accelerate this and move forward. And, and frankly, I would say, and I hope that as development opportunities arise in the future, that we really are, you know, vetting those opportunities to make sure that we can, you know, find developers who share that commitment with us. And we obviously can't force anyone to, you know, offer affordable units if that's not what they're going to choose to build. But I think we want to really, you know, seek to work with developers who will share that vision with us.
Trustee Bachhorst and then Trustee Ursink.
Thank you, President McCaig. I agree with Trustee Baldoff as well as Trustee Warren. I was on the CDA for the first five years of my, my first two terms. Opportunities like of redevelopment are few and far between. We have a housing crisis, not only in Sherwood, but across the nation. And we're seeing that crisis increase. So affordable units, so if we don't even have the conversation right now, and we have had affordable housing, we have had TIF in the past tied to affordable housing units. We have done this before. This is not reinventing any kind of wheel or inventing a wheel. So I, we voted unanimously a couple of years back to extend TID one for affordable housing. I'm not sure, you know, just as Trustee Baldoff mentioned, I don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good. I understand this is, there's a lot to combat here and we all know this because TID and TIF have been vilified by, by many. You know, unnecessarily perhaps, or in some regards, you know, everyone can have their opinion here. But there's a, it's an, it will be an uphill battle regardless. But to not even have the conversation, in my opinion, is irresponsible at, at the very least. Secondly, let's go back to the TID policy. This is a new policy. These fees and steps were not here before. Those were instated in the last couple of years or whenever we adopted, was it 2021 that we adopted the policy? I can't recall. But, um, so whether or not we waive, I would, I want to ask my board members to realize that that is not guaranteed revenue. That is something we put in place in case, to prevent willy nilly discussions and waste on staff time. This is completely different. We already have an ongoing project that has gone through many hurdles here. These are developers that are developing in our village. So if we were to waive a fee, and I'm not proposing we do that, it's not lost revenue. It's money that, that fee would not have hurt anyway, because no one is asking for, for TID or TIF. So, um, so I think that I am comfortable with waiving the fee. I'm comfortable with keeping it, but I'm not comfortable with kicking the can down and saying that we need to wait until certain bodies figure things out because there is a hard housing crisis that we all are aware of. We have a dedicated staff here that does with this. We have partners in the county and at the state level. And whether or not these, and there is a big cry in the community for affordable housing units. The developers have modified their plan and they've outlined to us the many reasons why they are decreasing the amount of units, including probably parking. So if we want to put our money where our mouth is, I say, by all means, encourage staff to have the conversation. Thank you.
Trustee Ursink and then Trustee Arndorfer.
Thank you, President McCaig. You know, I'm in agreement with the idea to let our staff have the discussions, keep the discussion going with any future multifamily developments as well as the Three Leaf Development. This has been, we've heard from residents, this has been a top priority for, for our community to, to, you know, from a, you know, an equity standpoint. You know, I feel that affordable housing has been a, a top priority for Sherwood. And, and, and I think these are, you know, these are the opportunities that we've been looking for. So I think there's no harm in, in opening up the discussion and talking through this and, and talking through with developers. You know, we want to make sure that we're working with developers that are open to the idea of affordable housing as well. You know, I, I think if, if we're dealing with developers that are, that are not even interested in affordable housing, maybe those are developers that we don't want to be working with here in Sherwood. So I would agree that at least opening, opening the doors to, to these conversations is a good idea. So I would support, you know, Directive A and Directive B is, is next steps. Thank you.
Jim?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, to be clear, I mean, I'm not opposed to conversations. I just would, don't want to deploy funds till we have some clear recommendations from the CDA and how, you know, what the optimal use for those funds might be. It's not clear to me that, you know, waiving fees in this manner will be the appropriate. Thank you.
Okay, I think we've gone around once. And I'm wondering if we can just do a check in to see if Steph has enough direction. Or I guess I would say that since we have a developer who came forward with a project before the TID policy was, was adopted, was completed and adopted. So there really wasn't an avenue, an avenue to submit an application for TIF assistance at that time. I think circling back and giving them that option and encouraging them to submit an application for TIF assistance. So that we at least have the numbers and the financials and the proposal to look at is, I think it's really our responsibility to do that because we have adopted this as, as a priority. So, and we have a by right development. It can move along on its own or we can encourage them to request TIF assistance. That doesn't mean we would use TID one funds. That's a completely different process. So it's really true. So that's what I would support. I am wondering, Staff, have you, Rebecca, are you hearing enough direction really directly related to the directives in the memo? Because we don't have to continue having, if we've kind of gotten to a place where there's enough direction, you don't have to continue discussing it and people can have a dinner break.
Here's.
Can I repeat what I heard?
Yes.
Um, generally pursue conversations with developers for affordable housing when they come in and have a desire to develop. However, if they want to submit an application, they can submit an application and, and pay for Phase One and Phase Two.
Okay, is there anybody who would? Let's do, so a show of hands, supporting that? And I guess a show of hands of supporting waiving the fee, like the first fee to get the ball rolling.
No, that's separate, isn't it?
You know, to our application, our application cost is $5,000 to submit a proposal for review and that would involve the financials, right? And a site survey, a site plan? And then the second phase is the AD500 for, what does that cover?
Phase two would be a more detailed review and then tenants for a development agreement.
Okay, so after Phase One, there would be a vote that would be reviewed by the village board or the CDA?
Both, in both phases, it's reviewed, they both.
Got it.
I think Trustee Stoker, maybe just, so Trustee Stoker, was your question whether there was being fees, fees were being waived. I was a little unclear in terms of what your question was.
Yeah, and I'm unclear about the discussion. So are we saying we're going to, if someone's really, if a developer comes in with a multimillion dollar development, are we really saying to them, because staff time is valuable? Are we really saying to them, you don't need to pay $5,500 if you can't come up with it to apply?
I don't think so. I think that that's what I was trying to clarify because I thought, I'm sorry, I don't have the memo up in front of me. So I just.
I'm not wa, I'm not in favor of waiving any fees for a developer that wants to pursue TIF funding.
Great.
That's, let's, let's, I mean, I think we need to make things very clear.
Yeah, I don't, that's why I was asking and I didn't see any show of hands for anybody who's open to waiving a fee. So we're good. Okay. Tammy?
Yeah, no, I do support waiving a fee because let's put it this way. None of you on this board, except for Anne and I, have dealt with TIF. This is, there's a lot of hostility in the community. And number one paramount here is the discussion around affordable housing. So I'm not willing to throw away a discussion around affordable housing. And we don't have to allow TIF for the other reasons because it kept, like, we are talking specifically right now about affordable housing, not about tips in general, not about if someone wants money to build a four-story garage or whatever. We are talking about affordable housing. So, and I will say there has been a lot of, let's just say this development has been ongoing. Okay, we have had two redevelopments in four years and they're both right now. So it's not like we are turning away people left and right who want to offer affordable housing in this community. We at some point have to be proactive and seek them out. So to have a discussion again about with, now, I'm not saying they can't afford the fees. I'm not, or maybe they would be fine with paying the fees. But I'm, as anyone who's interested in TIF in this village, probably would like to have some assurance that we, on the other side, are willing to meet them somewhere. And what I'm hearing by just the, things like, I'm not going to waive any fees. This must go to the CDA only, is that we as board members are kicking the can to other bodies and saying no, that we're not interested in affordable housing if it's linked to tax incremental financing. Which, by the way, any redevelopment in the village of Sherwood most likely will have to be linked to a tax incremental financing for redevelopment or for affordable housing, because the numbers just don't make it. But anyway, I digress. So yes, I am in support of continuing the conversation. I'm in support of proactively looking for opportunities for affordable housing in this village. Our taxpayers are for that. And a previous board was for that unanimously. So let's do it, guys. We, this, and also one other thing, we are the ones that are elected here. Okay, I understand we have a great community development authority, always have. But we are the ones ultimately in charge of, we are the fiduciaries in charge of the taxpayer money. Any TIF discussion. Any TIF discussion will come to us. And we have staff here. The CDA is not more or less qualified than us and our staff. It contains many of us here and our staff. So I am a 100% saying we need to strongly aggressively look for opportunities for affordable housing in this village, because they don't just fall on our lap. And this is how development is done. This is how affordable housing is done across the United States. So why should we be backwards? Thank you. So I support the options that Arthur.
Okay, thanks. I, I reviewed the, the memo. So support for direction A would be basically do what you do now, which is when a proposal comes in to development, ask if they're interested in including affordable housing and let them know about those options. So that's item A, show of hands for giving staff that direction. Okay, so majority six, one says, do what you're doing. Ask about affordable housing and let them know what's pathways forward there are. Item, direction B is to pursue a discussion with three leaf partners on the current development. Show of hands in support of that, since that was what we were talking about. Okay, so that's, that's trustee Warren, trustee Ursink, trustee Arndorfer, trustee Baldoff and trustee Bachorst. Okay. So item C, direction C is do nothing. I believe. Anyone in favor of that? Trustee Stockbrand? Okay.
But may I just say something?
Of course.
I think that if the developer is really interested, they can pay our staff the $5,500 to go through the discussion process. What we've been doing apparently up until now is the, the developers putting our staff, in, in my view, a very uncomfortable situation of they continue to talk about, well, we'd like to do affordable housing with you, we'd like to do affordable housing with you, then pay the $5,500 to our staff to go through the motions. It's not rocket science. It's the system we set up. I don't know why we're not doing it.
Trustee Stockbrand, if you will recall, the, when they first came forward and inquired about public assistance for affordable housing, the TID policy was not complete and it had not been adopted.
And it now is. It's there. So all they have to do is pay $5,500.
I'm not going to argue with you. I get it. You've made your point. So is there anyone else who needs to speak? Cause I think we've given staff the direction that they according to the options. Okay. Rebecca, is there anything else you need from us?
So with the, my, my only last question is, and it's regarding the fees. So with the direction of, of the, it's just to pursue public assistance, but not to waive any fees for an application.
Yeah, I think so that would look like, so let's be clear. What that looks like is you would let them know that they are welcome to submit an application to be considered for TIF.
Got it. Thank you.
And then what would be the process of, would you report back to the board at the? Because since they have, you know, been on hold, I'm sure that they want to move forward so that this would happen in a relatively short timeframe as far as reporting back. And would that come under a village manager report or what would that look like?
Sure, I'd be happy to place it under my report.
Okay, trustee Stockbrand?
Um, just to clarify then, so because there's sort of like, we have two different ways of going at this. We have the TIF money set aside by the board last year versus the method where you would apply to start a TIF, right? For funding. And so what's the difference with what we're doing now with staff? I mean, is there a difference between the TID policy we set up was sort of more going at it from a different direction? I may be not explaining this very well, but it was more about creating a TIF is my understanding. Whereas now we've got TIF money, which is very different than creating a TIF. So does, does policy 40 even really apply? Because it was something set aside in a very different way. You know what I'm saying?
Does, I can respond to that or Rebecca, do you want to?
Sure, I was just going to say that in the application itself, we had referenced it many times. It's a, a public assistance application, recognizing the fact that it could be TIF creation or it could be application for use of TID funds within its own, within a district that already exists. If eligible under the project plan. So I, I think the, the process would be to go through and see what financially, where that application is. And then if utilization of TID, what fund? Utilization of TID one funds was an option, meeting the criteria of state statute, that that would be identified and then provided within the scope of the review, so that the board would be able to see which options were available or not.
Okay, thank you.
So, and to be clear, nothing can move ahead without board approval, right?
Correct, yep. The city and the board review at both phases, so.
Any other questions at this time? All right, well, with that, I would take a motion to adjourn at 7:26.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Again.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Warren, seconded by trustee Bachhorst to adjourn the committee of the whole at 7:26. See y'all back here at 7:30.
Oh, all those in favor?
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, we are adjourned. Thank you for that.
We're going to stay here, right Rebecca?
Yes, yep, stay in the same zone.
Awesome.
And trustee Ursink.
He's back.
Okay. And this meeting, this meeting has been noticed in accordance with law.
Okay, great. And I would like to welcome Charles this evening, who's sitting in for Nathan as our village attorney. Welcome back, Charles. It's been a while.
Thank you, it has been a while. I'm glad to be here.
And also welcome to Toya, I believe she's on the call on the meeting tonight. And happy first election this week, or last week. All right, I have a cat who, man, everything is going this night. All right. Item number four, special order of business, there are none this evening. Item number five, consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by trustee Warren, seconded by trustee Baldoff. Any discussion? Okay, nothing to remove this week? All right. So with that, no discussion. We will approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, show of hands or voice. Aye?
Aye.
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 Is there any opposed? So consent, consent agenda is adopted six, zero. Item six, items removed, there were none. Item seven, public hearings, there are none this evening. Item eight, citizens to be heard, this item is for matters not on the agenda this evening. Is there anyone who would like to be heard this evening? All right, I am not seeing any hands or unmuted microphones. So moving on to item nine, new business, nine A, consider award of contracts for Hubbard Park parking lot reconstruction. This is meeting number five. And I will hand it over to director Bushlick.
Thank you. Good evening. As you note from the memo in your packet, we had four bids submitted for the Hubbard Park parking lot reconstruction. The lowest bid was submitted by Always Contractors. You, you may recognize that name. They have done work in the village previously. And, and after a review of their bid, staff is recommending award of the contract to Always. Just a couple of things I'd like to draw your attention to. One of them being the, the proposed MMSD funding sources that will be applied to cover the green infrastructure elements of this project. A second is the schedule. We, we specifically indicated in the special provisions for this project, a schedule, which we typically do not do. Typically, we allow the contractor to set that schedule within reason. Because that allows them more flexibility in their, in their scheduling calendar and typically translates to a, I don't necessarily want to say a lower price for us, but we typically don't pay a scheduling premium in, in those cases. This however, we think is a special case, particularly the impact that this work will have on the operator of Hubbard Park Lodge and the River Club. So we really made an effort to condense the schedule and specified a starting point of mid-April with a completion date of the end of the first or of early June. Based on the, the schedule that we reviewed, we think that's an entirely doable timeframe. And it, it will definitely compress that work with hopes that there, we lessen the impact to the ability that we can do so on the operator of the Hubbard Park Lodge. Be happy to answer your questions if there are any.
Are there, we can take questions at this time from the trustees or a motion? If you want to go ahead to discussion. Trustee Arndorfer?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think it's great that we were able to find a way to get them, you know, to, to work toward a, you know, truncated timeline on this. I'm, I'm just wondering, are there any thoughts on what, you know? I'm thinking we'll be hitting, you know, early days of summer by the time this is in process. Any, any thoughts on what implications for parking or congestion in the area are going to be like with that? Is there anything we can do to address that?
Well, um, you know, that is a conversation I expect to have with Mr. Davis. There, there might be some options. So the bad part is, that's the only parking lot that serves his business. I don't want to say it's a good part, but it's not an exceptionally large parking lot. So, you know, we're not talking about displacing 60 or 70, 80, 100 cars. So will there be some pressure on the surrounding area? Absolutely. Like I said, I have a couple of thoughts that, that I will discuss with Mr. Davis to determine the feasibility. If those require any special arrangements, we will certainly come back to the board to review those and discuss permissions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or emotions? Trustee Baldoff?
Um, I'm, I would be ready to make a motion if others are. Okay, let me pull this up here. I move that Hubbard Park parking lot contract to be awarded as a unit price contract to Always Contractors in the amount of $276,409.50.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Baldoff, seconded by trustee Arndorfer. Any discussion? I, did I miss something trustee Warren?
No, I was just saying that Jim beat me, so.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, I'm looking forward to supporting this project and moving ahead. I think it'll be a great improvement. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, why don't we do a roll call vote?
Trustee Ursink? Trustee Moore Baldoff?
Yes.
Trustee Stockbrand?
Aye.
Trustee Warren?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Bachhorst?
Yes.
President McCaig?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Great. So moving on to nine B, consider River Park Lot C Path Connector funding recommendation. I believe this is coming to us sort of in tandem with the nine A, director Bushlick.
Sure. So, um, just to provide a bit of background that maybe isn't super clear in the memo. During the planning phases of the Hubbard Park parking lot construction, you'll note that we allocated or earmarked $250,000 in the long range financial plan implementation schedule for the construction of that lot. Last year, based on construction prices and some other factors, we had anticipated that there would be some unused funds from the borrowing that covered the $250,000 for the parking lot. Last year, that there was a discussion with the then Parks Commission about some of the elements of the reconstruction of Lot C following completion of the MMSD work and their use of that lot. And the, the Parks Commission at the time verified their support for the addition of green infrastructure to the lot in the park. And also their support for what I refer to or is referred to as a path connector. That, that path connector provides access from the, the section of River Park Court that runs parallel with Edgewood Avenue around the Ball Diamond and, and connects back to the path. That, that was a recommendation that was included in the, the village's previous pedestrian and bike plan. And it's really a safety recommendation. It provides an, an option for people who are entering the park from Oakland Avenue to access both the Oakley Trail and other portions of the park without walking or biking through the parking lot. So the Parks Commission did endorse the addition of that path connector earlier last year. Since the, the change to the, the Parks Commission and the Pedestrian Safety Commission and their combination into park and open space, Tyler had intended to take the park, the path connector back to them to, to review it with the new group and, and just confirm their support and input. That actually had to be rescheduled for some information that we were waiting for. But it, it most recently went to them at their January meet, January, February, I'm sorry, their early February meeting. So it is now coming to you with their recommendation that that path connector be constructed following the completion of the MMSD project and the reconstruction of Lot C. They endorsed the use of any remaining residual funds from the borrowing for the Hubbard Park parking lot that might go unused. That will not be enough to completely implement the Lot C path connector. However, it would not, we would not be looking at a construction date until 2023. So it's, it would be staff's recommendation that this will be included in the 2023 budget. At that time, we'll have a much better handle on what residual funds are available and what additional funding might be necessary from capital reserves or another source. So. the item tonight is the presentation of the Park and Open Space Committee's recommendation that the Lot C path connector be constructed. And they're asked that the Village Board consider the use of those residual funds, excuse me, toward the cost of that construction.
Thank you. And has this gone through the Department of Public Works or the Public Works Committee? Or it just came straight to the board?
It came straight to the board because of the timing of the other committee meeting.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Ursink?
Sorry about that. You know, I just, I have a couple of questions here. So looking at the plan, Leanne, we have the pedestrian ramp. Is that what you're talking about here that goes basically behind the parking lot? And then behind that large bioswell and then up and connects to the path? That's what you're proposing? That's what I'm looking at here, right?
Correct.
Okay. So I think the one concerning thing for me, I love a good bioswell. I'm a huge fan of bioswell, put them everywhere. But this particular location is a hotspot for Little League. I mean, you have a lot of families hanging out in this area because it's really the only shaded spot that people can stand, whether it be raining, whether it be too sunny. And you'll see the majority of families sitting back there more so than you will see sitting in the stands, just because that's a shaded area. So I just wanted to note that. I don't know if that was taken into consideration from the Parks Committee. I do know Ian Berry is part of that, part of the Parks Committee. And I guess I just wanted to, you know, maybe a little bit more insight on that decision to put a rather large sort of bioswell right, you know, in this space where a lot of families congregate.
As a matter of fact, the Village Board previously approved this site plan when we, when you considered and approved the agreement with MMSD to reconstruct the parking lot. So this bioswell is not connected to the path connector. This bioswell was approved by the board back when that agreement was reached.
Got you. Okay. All right. And, you know, and maybe we had discussions with them at that time because I know Little League has been, you know, we've met with them and I'm just looking at this image and that looks rather large and, you know, pretty front and center to where people congregate. So I just, you know, but so right now, the only thing we're talking about is this connector, connector path, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or a motion? Trustee Stockbrand?
Thank you. I guess I'm curious about the funding here. So we ended up with some extra money from a bond issue for the improvements from a park. Is that, and we have a limited, limited way we can use that money. Is that correctly, Anne?
That's my understanding. As I mentioned, the the long-range financial plan and the borrowing that was predicated from that plan identified $250,000 in a GO borrowing for park improvements. And that 250 was slotted for the Hubbard Park parking lot reconstruction. Because of the availability of MMSD, various types of MMSD funding to cover the green infrastructure costs, the village will not use the entire $250,000 for the parking lot. So there are residual funds available, and my understanding is yes, they are earmarked explicitly for park use.
So if we didn't use the money for a project that we hadn't really budgeted for, would it go back to to pay down our debt? Like, I was under the impression that we were talking about $95,000. I'm not sure where I, I think I heard Tyler perhaps, I thought I heard some staff at one point say we had $95,000 extra from a bond issue that has to be used on parks or it goes back toward debt service. Is that your understanding? I know Mark's not on the call.
Yep, that is my understanding. The $95,000 was a very early estimate number based on early engineering estimates for the cost of the parking lot and what funding might be available to cover it. You know, as I mentioned, that $90,000 or $90, $95,000 is is not quite that amount based on the bids that we got back and, you know, changes in construction costs these days. But yes, that is my understanding that if it were not to be used for this, there would be a couple of options. One would be some other park project. A second would be to use it to pay back bond proceeds. A third would be to add more of those funds to River Park to cover GI costs and then sit on that MMSD money for future projects would also be an option.
Okay, I guess I just feel like there's other options here that I, I mean, I support the connector, I think, for the safety feature. Honestly, I'd like to see it go a little bit beyond the concession stand, just to move people through that site. I'm the liaison to the Parks and Public Spaces and it's apparently very busy there, as Arthur indicated, during Little League games. And if you could actually send people farther around, like beyond, is that a batting cage I see on the south end of the property?
Yeah, that is.
And we obviously, I don't really don't want to move that. I mean, I don't know, in the scheme of things, a batting cage seems like, anyway. I don't know. I can support this, but I guess when I think about, I'd like to know like how much money because debt, you know, we're starting to come up against, we'll be coming up like by 2025 against some debt issues. Because we can only, you know, have so much debt required by state law. And if I have an option to put some money back to reduce our debt, I guess if I had a full picture of everything, I feel like I could make a more informed decision. And so I guess that's my one hesitation here is I don't know what else could be done with that money to help the village. But I understand the safety concern here. So I would just say in the future, it would be helpful if if I knew what the other choices were for that money. Is it to reduce our village debt? Because, you know, we're all for affordable housing. But one of the biggest things you can do to make the village more affordable is keep an eye on the tax rate. It doesn't do any good if people can finally afford to buy a house here, but then they can't afford the taxes. This could be an affordable housing question right here. So I guess it would just be good in the future going forward to know what are my other options besides spending it on something we hadn't really planned on. But I'll support this tonight. Thank you.
Other discussion? Questions or a motion? Trustee Ursink?
Leanne, just to clarify, is this connector being built basically for the purposes of the sewer construction and to allow people to maneuver around this space safer? Or is this, this is just a more, can you explain what the purpose of this is? I apologize. I'm just trying to find it here in the pack and I'm just not sure what, what the need for this is.
This, this particular path connector was recommended in the village's pedestrian safety plan, trying to, I'm sorry. It was identified in the village's 2015 comprehensive park plan. And as I understand it, it was almost entirely or certainly primarily a safety recommendation in consideration. And it really has nothing to do with the sewer project, except that some of the grading work that is necessary for this path will be done as part of the lot reconstruction following MMSD's use of it for the Edgewood Near Surface Collector Project.
Great. You know, I spend probably half of my summer, you know, sitting at this, in this park here. And I just can't see, I just don't see the need for it. I don't, I might be, maybe I'm not thinking clearly right now about it, but I just, I don't, I don't see what, what this adds to the park, you know, from a safety perspective. I see people free flowing through, through River Park constantly with no issues. So I just don't know what adding another path through this area would actually do. Can you, can you maybe, can you talk about it from a philosophical level like that? Like what this, how you see this path benefiting?
Well.
I can.
Okay, I'd love to hear it.
I guess I just want to, I want to remind you that this was part of the Bike and Ped Safety Plan, and it is a recommendation from one of our citizen committees. And having been on the Parks Commission when that plan was adopted, this is something that the Bike Ped Safety Committee previous ones have been working on and advocating for for years. So this is the time, this has been proposed in the past. This is the time to do it because the area is under construction already. So if we don't do it now, it will, either it won't be done at all or it'll be done twice, and that's not cost efficient. So I guess I would, I understand from your usage perspective, but I, as a former Little League parent and Parks Commission and a current cyclist, I think that it's a reasonable proposal to share the space. And I think that it will, there are lots of people that come in and you have to go through a parking lot. And I think this is a better arrangement. And just remember, this did come through a citizen committee. So unless, I can understand, but I would like to move forward on this because we want to have these committees feel like they're adding value. Leanne, if you have anything to add, I didn't mean to cut you off as a staff person.
My only thing I would add is that it was a unanimous recommendation of the Park and Open Space Committee.
So I will go ahead and make a motion to, I move to approve the River Park Lot C Path Connector project to be funded with residual bond proceeds supplemented by capital reserves as necessary and constructed in 2023.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by President McKay, seconded by trustee Warren. Discussion, trustee Stockbrand?
Oh, thank you. I'm just wondering, Leanne, is there any way to put a number in this motion? Can we put a not to exceed in here of $65,000 total cost?
I'm afraid not, because that's a very preliminary engineering number. We don't have construction numbers. We won't have that until it's bid. You could, you could do that at the time that a contract is issued. But there's really no reasonable way to do that at this point.
So then can we just wait and do this next year when we have a specific number? It won't be done until 2023.
Actually, what we're, sure. What we're asking you to do this evening is to endorse the use of the residual funds for this project. We're not, I included cost estimates for context. But you're not approving a budget allocation for the project this evening. So it wouldn't be my, excuse me, my recommendation that the, that the, that the motion include a number simply because we're approving, we're asking you, the Park and Open Space Committee is asking you in concept to approve use of residual funding for this project.
As opposed to putting it back to debt service or something?
Correct.
But we just, we don't know, we don't have any information about what the other options are besides putting in the connector.
This is the only, so my understanding is these funds must be spent by the end or at some point during 2023. That's my understanding. That would need to be confirmed by Mark.
Okay, so we could possibly go back at this in 2023?
At this point, without any type of updated park plan or updated plans for Atwater, there are no other contemplated park capital improvements for which, which would require this type of funding.
Does that answer your question? Trustee Stockbrand?
So is it time sensitive? If it's a project that's going to happen in 2023, why can't we wait until 2023 and get some numbers? And find out what our other options are. If we can apply this money toward debt service, I guess I'd like to know that that's an option and how much it would be. We don't, so I feel like I don't have a number and I don't have a deadline. So
your deadline is 2023. The number is the conceptual cost for this construction. But at this point, you can't put a not to exceed number on that. We have, we don't have any idea what construction costs will be next year. If there's significantly more, you can choose not to award a contract for the project. But at this point, I don't feel it would be appropriate to put a number in the motion.
And so I guess I'm not sure, why can't we wait and vote on this next year?
Well, right now, there's a motion on the table to vote on it tonight.
Okay.
So the choice at this point is either to vote in favor of the motion on the table or to vote no on the motion of the table. And if it fails, then another motion could be made. So is there further discussion regarding the motion on the table? Or on the floor? Okay, hearing none, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Moore Baldoff?
Yes.
Trustee Stockbrand?
No.
Trustee Warren?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Backhorst?
Yes.
Trustee Ursink?
Yes.
President McKay?
Aye.
Motion carries six one.
All right, thank you very much. We are at nine C, Review Lake Drive, STH 32, Green Infrastructure Evaluation and Alternatives Analysis, meeting number seven. This Director Bushlick also?
It is. You'll recall that the Village Board approved a contract with Kapoor Engineering, who is also under contract with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for the design of Lake Drive or State Highway 32, as it is known. That analysis is in your packet this evening. It was also in your board packets at your early February meeting as this item was reviewed by the Public Works Committee at that time. I will just very briefly introduce this and then hand this over to committee chair Ursink. He can give his thoughts if he'd like on the committee's perspective. But I will say that Kapoor reviewed a number of alternatives and really only found two of them to be feasible at this location. A reminder that, like, the Lake Drive corridor lies within the combined sewer area. You'll know that staff has been pretty consistent about recommending that any type of grant funding for green infrastructure be allocated and used within the separated sewer area. The separated sewer area drains to the Milwaukee River. The Milwaukee River is an impaired water body. And as such, the village is under EPA and DNR requirements to reduce the TMDLs, Total Daily Maximum Loads of Certain Pollutants, particularly including total suspended solids, which generally you refer, we refer to as sediment and phosphorus. Not to say that those items that drain into a storm sewer that discharges into Lake Michigan that that makes it any better. However, Lake Michigan is not an impaired water body under the EPA guidelines. So any reduction of those items from this corridor does not, does not count toward the village's TMDL reduction requirements. So as I mentioned, staff has been pretty consistent in recommending that any available grant funding be used and targeted in the separated sewer area. So this is combined sewer. There are two small storm sewer areas that lie within the combined sewer and discharge to Lake Michigan. Any, therefore, everything that Kapoor reviewed, they reviewed in locations that drain to those storm sewer outfalls, which is generally speaking, north of Capitol Drive, there's a reach somewhat south. But generally speaking, we're talking about the north half of the corridor. There's a reach somewhat south, but, but generally speaking, we're talking about the north half of the corridor. So the Public Works Committee at its last meeting had a recommendation to approve the use of upsizing to a standard 48-inch catch basins with inlets along the, the project corridor. And I will, at this point, allow, and my comments.
All right, any questions or a motion? I just wanna say, I really appreciated the report. It was really helpful to see what the options were and why they were, were not recommended at this time. So let's see, I saw Trustee Stokbrand first, and then Trustee Ursink.
Thank you. In the interest of full disclosure, this is my neighborhood, and I am an avid cyclist, but I did support the replace in place. Yeah, obviously, we did unanimously last year. So in reading through this, something that kind of bothered me, I, when I get to page 62, obviously, we're really waiting to hear from the state what they're going to do with the design. And so when I think about what we can do with green infrastructure, to me, I have a question about how do I know what we can do with green infrastructure until I know what's the design the state is going to approve for us? Because we know, we all voted, well, the last board, we voted unanimously, or was it this one? Time is COVID time, I don't know. But we voted unanimously that we wanted to replace in place. But on page 62, they talk about redoing Lake Drive with a 40, you know, striping for a 40-foot, 40-foot roadway. But they don't account for what's gonna happen to the last four feet, because right now, it's 44 feet, and WISDOT has committed to leaving the roadway the same. And as I was reading through this today, I thought, well, we want to keep parking on both sides in that shared lane, right? Well, if the state's not going to let us have that, and if the state is going to mandate, as on page 62, section 4.0, if they're gonna mandate a five-foot bicycle lane, 11-foot driving, 11-foot driving, five bicycle, eight parking, then what happens to the extra four? And in their narrative here, they say, for the entire length of the roadway, reducing the pavement by four feet reduces the total impervious area by 27,000 square feet, or a half an acre, a little over half an acre. And I'm thinking, you know, if the state's not gonna let us keep what we have, and they're gonna force us to give up parking on the west side of the, or whatever side of the street, I would like to know that before I sign off on what I want for green infrastructure, because if they're gonna make us do the two dedicated bike lanes and take away one lane of parking, I say, let's go green and let's go to 40 feet, unless I know it's gonna affect cost, safety, pedestrian safety. I mean, my understanding generally is that the narrower your street is, the safer it is for pedestrians. And correct me if I'm wrong here, someone. And will the funding change? But, you know, if we can't have what we want, let's go green and go with a narrower roadway, go to 40 and keep some water out of the watershed.
Thank you, Trustee Ursink.
Thank you, President Mckay. I just wanna, you know, thank Leanne, the Department of Public Works, and our engineers for investigating all of the green infrastructure possibilities that, that, for all projects that we're working on currently. I think I've been in three meetings recently where we've been talking exclusively about green infrastructure. So I, I, I am just, I'm thrilled that it's a focus in our community, and, you know, we, we're gonna keep working on it. You know, this, this spot, this location is very challenging as far as green infrastructure, and I think we reached a, a very happy medium with 48-inch catch basins. Actually, and then also, on the flip side, not being a cost to the village. So I, I, I do, you know, I mean, I, I'm with, I'm with Trustee Stokbrand, I, let's go green. But let's, let's do it, let's be smart about it, let's do it the right way. And, and I, these are the options that were in front of us, and I feel that we, we chose the best route for that. But I'm, I'm always interested in hearing what the options are. I'm, I'm always interested in thinking big for our community, and, you know, look forward to, yeah, I, I look forward to seeing the designs of, of Lake Drive eventually. But I think for what's in front of us now, this, this is the best, the best option. So I would, I would love to make a motion if possible.
Yes, please.
All right. So I move that the Village of Shorewood support green infrastructure best managing, best management practices in the form of 48-inch catch basins be included in the 2026 Lake Drive project with no direct cost impact to the village.
I'll second.
Is there a second? Okay. Motion by Trustee Ursink, seconded by Trustee Baldoff. Point of clarification, Director Bush, like, it sounds like the catch basins, no matter what the width of the road were, would be the catch basins that are presented here for us to approve would be the recommendation.
That's correct, regardless of the roadway width, which, you know, which, as you know, WISDOT has stated that they intend to keep at its current width. Regardless of, of that, the, the design will require catch basins. So this, this would definitely direct the preferred size.
Okay. So we can, so yeah, the, the motion before us is to approve the design for the catch basin. Trustee Stokbrand.
Is there anything that Leanne would recommend that we could do to advocate for the village? If we decide, you know, if we're not gonna get the replace in place, could we look at what happens if we go from 44 to 40? Because if I can increase the green space, I would be all for doing that instead of paying for four feet of impervious pavement that serves no purpose. I mean, is, is someone from Kapoor here?
No. I, I think that if we.
If you don't mind. Leanne, I feel like this is out of scope for the discussion, because it's, it's a design. And I guess I would, since it's not part of the motion, I would like to take this first, and then we could make it as a consideration for a future item. I do believe that the DOT is coming to, before us in April, maybe? So that would give time for the Committee of Public Works to meet. Trustee Stokbrand?
I guess my concern here is that would we be signing off on any other options for going green beyond this? Like, like narrowing the roadway? Can anyone tell me definitively, will this hamper us in efforts to pursue green, other green infrastructure in the future for this piece of the project?
Leanne, would you, do you have a, a statement on that? It might be frozen. I think she's trying to get back on. Again, I, I, if, if the answer to that question is standing in the way of you taking action on this motion, you know, I guess the only thing, we have a motion, again, we have a motion on the floor. There's no motion to defer, we would have to take this motion.
Leanne just lost her internet connection, so she'll be trying to get back, but it may be a little bit.
Trustee Stokbrand?
I guess as a point of information for everyone, then, is this time sensitive? If we would vote this down, could I make a motion to defer just so that we know more clearly? Like, if, if there, if Leanne can text Rebecca, Manager Ewald, is this time sensitive? I just don't want to close a door in any way if we can make another step toward going green and hear from WISDOT before, I just don't wanna, you know.
I understand, yeah. I think, again, if this fails, then somebody can make another motion. So Trustee Ursink?
I, I mean, I guess I don't want to labor the point here. We're talking about green infrastructure, you're talking about, you know, I understand narrowing the roadway is, is a form of, is not so much green infrastructure, but you're making it more pedestrian friendly. I just don't think these are, these are, this is, it's kind of apples and oranges at this point. So, you know, I think there's still a lot of, there's still a huge process to get to the point of seeing these designs. But what's in front of you is the, the best solution for green infrastructure as it is right now. I mean, it's just, we, I think if we want to talk about 40, you know, 40-foot roads, we're gonna have that opportunity eventually. This vote tonight is not going to, you know, is not going to get in the way of it, so.
Yeah, there's no, yeah, and also, it's out of scope, so we can't. So I guess what I, if there's no further discussion of anything new, I would ask that we take a vote and then see what happens. So anyone who hasn't spoken, have pointed discussions? Okay, in that case, let's take a roll call, oh, Rebecca?
Leanne's coming back in, I was getting a text from her at the same time. She said if you want to wait, you can. It's up to you.
Yeah, well, the, so the question, hi, Leanne, welcome back. Trustee Stokbrand, it sounds like your question was, if you support this tonight, does it close the door on reconsidering narrowing the road at a future meeting? If that becomes the desire of the board?
Correct, and I would just want to hear that from the Wis- Wisconsin Department of Transportation, quite honestly.
Right, and we don't have, that's not available to us tonight. So I think we need to focus on what's in front of us.
If I'm, if I may?
Yeah.
While, while down the road, these items are intertwined. At this particular point, we're talking about catch basins, we're not talking about road width, and we need catch basins regardless of the width of the road. So I, this, this would not in any way preclude or hamper further discussion or action related to the road configuration or width.
Thanks for confirming that. Can we take a roll call, please?
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokbrand.
Yes.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Orndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Backhorst.
Yes.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
President Mckay.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. That concludes item nine, moving on to item 10, Reports of Village Officials. Village President, 10A, the ICC meeting. Manager Ewald updated us all in her Friday update that I got support to create a racial equity committee, standing committee of the ICC. It was not a slam dunk, but we had some discussion and, and managed to get a unanimous vote creating that committee. It had, they had created an ad hoc committee that was a work group in 2020 in response to the murder of George Floyd and the activity around Black Lives Matter movement locally, and came up with three areas of recommendations, and then nothing happened past that. They adopted that report, but the group had not met. So I asked permission to reconvene that group. They felt that an ad hoc group could not reconvene, so I made a proposal that we form a committee, and that did end up passing. So I will report back with how that's gonna work and how it will function. So that gives us another option for partnerships. Item two, North Shore Police Consolidation Kickoff Meeting, that was held last week, and the slides are in the packet. I don't have any other information other than that. And B, Village Trustees, anybody have reports?
Trustee Warren.
Rebecca, you're handling the police chief recruitment timeline, right? That's your report? Okay.
Sure, but you're welcome to, if you'd like to.
No, I'll, I'll let you cover it instead of having two reports on the same thing.
Okay.
Hey, I'm not seeing any other trustees report. 10C, Village Manager.
Last Thursday, Trustee Warren joined us over at the Village Hall, and there were interviews conducted with us, as well as a law enforcement panel for a first round of interviews for the police chief candidates. That was a full day, and coming forth from there, there were four finalists recommended, whose names will be provided to you later this week. We're just providing some time for those individuals to contact and be in touch with their communities regarding their, their new position as finalist. So the next step moving forward will be to, for the public and anyone in the community or neighboring communities to join us for a candidates forum next Monday, February 28th at 6:00 PM, that's gonna be held by Zoom and facilitated by the Rising Group, who's our recruitment firm working in this project with us. So the candidates will be asked one or two questions, and then time will be, be made available for the public to ask a few as well. Following that open candidate forum, we're going to, the police commission will convene on Tuesday evening and go into closed session for purposes of interviewing the candidates. And I'm hopeful that they will reconvene later in open session and, and have a chief to hire. So it's an exciting time, I want to thank Trustee Warren for taking just a really full day. It was, it's a long day to be sitting in, in Village Hall from about 7:30 until 4:30. So I thank you very much for your time.
My, my pleasure to help out, no problem.
And that concludes my report.
Okay, moving on to item 11, Items for Future Consideration. Trustee Stokbrand?
Thank you. I'd like to move that we ask staff for an update on the audiovisual upgrades that we paid for for the Village Center and the Village Hall, and a plan for meeting back again in person, both the committees and the Village Board, at the next Village Board meeting, please? Because I'm assuming we're not meeting in person next week, or I don't even know. Where are we?
So the 28th, the candidate forum is a Zoom, is virtual. But I would second that motion. Any discussion?
I would just add, that's, that's a great motion, because I think when I was in Village Hall, I saw some of the equipment. So it's, it's there, I've seen it. So it'd be nice to, nice to kind of hear it and, uh, hear, hear an update in the meeting.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye or show of hands? Aye?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? So motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
I have an item. You may recall that I made a brief report a couple of months ago regarding a brief conversation with Dominion Properties Lead. They own, that's the developer that purchased the, well, now the orthopedic clinic at Capitol in Oakland, as well as the park, surface parking lot, and the former Shorewood Physicians Building. They wanted to check in because since they first acquired the parcels, the village had begun the learning process around affordable housing, had extended the TID, had had change in leadership, and so was just checking in on what the priorities were of the village. At which time, I shared.
At which time, I shared everything that, you know, everybody has been working on this year and what the timeline for that was. At this time, that, that person is requesting the opportunity to come before the board and hear priorities about affordable housing concepts potentially at that site. And because they don't want to, basically, they don't want to start just developing a plan for something and then have to redesign it, you know? Or they want, they have a couple of concepts or something and they want to get some feedback. So it would be a discussion item and it would just be an opportunity for that company to come forward and give an update on the parcels that they're holding. So I said that I would bring it to the board as an item for discussion. And if it passes, then we will agenda it as such and the person can come before us and it will be a very short discussion because there won't be any, anything to review. It won't take the place of an application for TIF assistance or any approvals or zoning, zoning review. It is simply that he has several parcels and is considering different concepts and would like the opportunity to talk to the board about that. So if it passes, it'll be on the agenda. If it doesn't pass, it won't be on the agenda and I'll have to decide what to do from there. So I would make a motion to receive an update from Dominion Properties on the status of the parcels they hold at Oakland and Capital. And in the, in the agenda items, we would put the addresses, I don't have the addresses right now.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by President McKay, seconded by trustee Ursink, any discussion? Trustee Stokbrand.
So once again, I guess, so would, he'd be, he or she would be talking to us as a committee of the whole and looking for, I mean, I, I guess, you know, I, I voted for this TIF policy and it's like, now we don't, we don't want to use it. And I know earlier there were comments made, you know, there were comments made about how we want to value the volunteers who work on these committees and, you know, the CDA worked on this, this TIF policy.
Yeah.
And, and now it's.
Wouldn't take the place of the TIF. Yeah, you don't have to vote for it and it wouldn't take the place of the TIF policy. I think he has two very different ideas and he wants to get a sense from the village as to where his ideas align with priorities. And again, we don't have to hear him completely.
And so he's not comfortable, obviously, he's already talked to our staff. Is he? So he's talked to our staff and finds that inadequate and now he wants, would it be a committee of the whole or just a?
Um, I didn't put it in the motion, so.
Okay, thank you.
Could make an amendment? Any other discussion or questions? All right, seeing none, we'll just take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, does anybody want me to reread the motion? Okay, all those in favor, show of hands or voice?
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed? Okay, so it looks like it's six to one, did I get that right? Okay, thank you. Um, the last item on the agenda is adjournment, is there a motion to?
I'm moved.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay, motion by trustee Backhorst and seconded by trustee Ursink. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, we will adjourn at eight-thirty PM and I do believe that is our shortest meeting on record.
Yay.
Good night, everyone.
Congratulations, there you go, good night.